We'll start this regular council meeting on Monday, September 21st.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's been three weeks. Two weeks, well, one week. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor Loughlin.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Goodweiler?
Here.
Stulman?
Here.
We have no guest speakers on the agenda. Public comment, if anyone's here would like to address the council, we'd like to hear you. Cannot act. Okay, we're gonna move on from that. Consent agenda. Includes the minutes from the last council meeting of September 8th, and the minutes of a special council meeting on September 14th. Some West Branch Fire Department appointments. And the claims report, give me a motion, someone approve that. Nick? Jerry will second. Just for the public record, we have for the fire department. After claims or before? Before I lost it. Page nine. Brandon Charles? I lost it. Clint McFarland, Brandon Charles, and Ben Barrett, a reappointment of Ben Barrett. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote on the consent agenda, please.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Okay, so our first item is, we have before us a resolution 1935. Proving in the amount of a questionable amount, which we will discuss, to be contributed to the West Branch School District over the next three years for the construction of a turn lane required for the high school expansion project. So, give me a motion, someone. So we can chat. To Nick? Tom will second. What do I have to say? I think at one point, a 50-50 proposal was thrown at us, discussed with us, to share in this turn lane. I think with talking with some of you, that we are leaning toward probably the cheapest version of a $300,000 version. Is what we're probably leaning toward. To keep everyone's expenses down on the north side of the main street across from the high school. At a 50-50 split. That's $150,000 contribution from the city. There was a little bit of discussion amongst us private, a couple of us privately, that that might be a little high. So I guess I'm throwing out there for your guys' thoughts. I'm fine with that 50-50 split, the way it sits. We would budget that for the next three years, $50,000 a year. Starting this next fiscal budget process.
Was it 300,000? Was that the cheapest one?
Well, it was 240. But that did not include.
260? It's 224, and then 36,000 for the utility costs, and then took it to 260. And that's for the north side asshole.
However, that did not include engineering fees.
That on us?
No. Engineers didn't put in. They didn't roll in their fee to that? No, I don't know why, but.
They approximated about 10%?
Yeah. I always rolled it up to 300,000. More, more or less. What are your thoughts? Reason I want to bring this up now is because we just need to get this, we've been talking about it for about three or four or five months now. You just, you know, the school needs to know. Let's just hash it out and get it done. So they can get started planning.
Why be willing to support it if we lock in at 150,000? And any cost overruns the school pickup?
I was just saying, we can write the agreement that says 50-50 up to 300,000, write it that way, and then that would over cap.
Just a set dollar amount at.
Yeah, but if it's like 260 or 270, or whatever it is, then we're both gonna save money.
Gotcha.
Up to 150.
Yeah. What are your thoughts?
That's all great, but how are we gonna pay for it? I mean, I know it says TIF here, but that still comes out of our general fund.
Correct. Road use tax, general fund.
Is it something worth raising, is it worth us raising taxes over? Do we want to be that good of partners? I mean, you know, we've got a sewer thing we got going on, we've got stormwater projects we're gonna do. We've got Cedar Johnson Road in the plans. We're gonna talk a little bit later about hiring a fifth officer. I mean, how's all this stuff gonna get paid for? I mean, it's nice to be good partners. And I get all that. I mean, this would be a much easier decision if we had a comprehensive plan, or, you know, a capital improvements plan. You know, then it could just be, it ain't on the list. I mean, you know, I don't consider the school being not good partners with us. And there's been many times that we've been told no from the school, and it says it doesn't fit within their facilities plan, or, you know, it doesn't contribute to the education of children, which are all great answers. I mean, I'd be disappointed if that wasn't the answer that they gave us. But, you know, our answer should be, you know, how does doing this for their project benefit our taxpayer? You know, how does giving money to this, how are we gonna be able to justify that if we have to raise taxes? How are we gonna be able to justify that if we have to lower services? Those are the questions we need to ask. And if right now, all five of us are sitting here, and none of us have any idea how we're gonna pay for this, except for that it's probably just gonna come out of the general fund. Which means if it just comes out of the general fund, then it's something else that's not gonna get paid for, that we're paying for currently.
Does anyone know what we usually spend on capital improvement projects out of our general fund? Every year, we do street projects.
I'd have to calculate it, I don't have it off the top of my head.
For the past previous years, we've been just trying to take care of what's on books.
I mean, one of the things I ask, because if this does pass, my concern isn't whether it passes or not then. My concern moves into, is how do we make this work where it doesn't affect everything else? I mean, I'm not 100% sure, but I think the votes are here to pass it. So my gear is to shift. If it's gonna pass, how can we make this not hurt? And.
Well, this would probably be a capital improvement project over the next three years.
So it's other capital improvement projects that we're not gonna get to do. Like maybe some water improvements on the east side, or, you know, some of the other things that have been in our plans for a while now are just gonna get kicked out of the road a little further. I mean, one of the things I asked was, all right, what's our road use tax? How much of our road use tax do we use towards operations? Is there a percentage of the road use tax that's free, that we could say, hey, we'll give you 10% of our road use tax every year, whatever that might be, because in this COVID thing, we don't know what that's going to be and how that's going to affect us. You know, we don't know how the sales tax is gonna affect us. And where's the money gonna come from that we were gonna use to pay for the park that's supposed to come out of the sales tax? I mean, this is a bad time to be making decisions when we don't know where the money's gonna come from. And it doesn't mean that we don't need to pitch in, it doesn't mean that we don't need to help, it just means we gotta figure out how much we can afford before we commit to something.
I think the sales tax for Cubby Park has been pretty healthy.
It has been.
Even through.
It has been so far. What I can tell you, talking about what Colton asked about revenue for road use tax. This year, I budgeted 310,000 for revenue. We budgeted, let me find it again. 368,000 in expense. Against 310 revenue. So we're gonna draw down from our previous balance about $70,000, $60,000, if we come in at what we budgeted for revenue. And we spend at this current rate.
Gordon, didn't we take some of that money out of there and throw it towards the bridge also? Is that the money that you're talking about while we're?
We, I think that has been paid back.
Good.
That has been paid back.
Well, I don't think we had any intentions of paying it back. I think we were taking it and putting it towards the bridge, so we didn't have to borrow money.
Well, what I'm thinking was some money for a sidewalk that we borrowed. And then we paid that back. I kinda got in trouble on that one.
Yeah, because we still have some payments from TIF for the bridge.
25,000 a year.
A little bit, there.
You said 25,000, I don't have.
25,000 a year, I thought it was.
25,000.
I was thinking maybe 50,000.
But either way, those obligations are still out there, that's all I was trying to say. I know that I haven't had a chance to talk with Maggie, and she's been real concerned on how much TIF we can do really in given time without hurting ourselves. And she always makes it seem like we're pretty close to where we need to be. Although I know there's arguments that we could be doing more. So there's that balance that I haven't really got my finger on what that really is between being conservative versus being taking a certain amount of responsible risk for it and what we pick. And like, we also have a whole site that TIF had, the TIF agreement hasn't been worked out yet, we don't know what that's gonna be. And then, you know, we always have other developments that come into town that are going to want the same type of incentives for that. We have another turn lane that's probably going to be involved with the DB site. We don't know what that looks like yet. Other projects, Colton's already mentioned, so. There are some unknowns out there, and I think, you know, that's one of the reasons why I mentioned we should be involved as a contingency. We should, if something happens and the contingency of the project that this is supposed to pay for, if that's exacerbated, then that makes all kinds of sense. At least in my world. But to join in before the contingencies of this turn lane is a contingency.
So you're saying that school has a contingency? That's the contingency you're talking about?
And like, anything associated with a project that you don't foresee, and you go through the onset, it's usually considered a contingency. This turn lane, if it was something that it was a luxury, and the city was pushing that on the school district to do it, that'd be a whole different discussion. But this is based on SUDAS, based on engineering. This is a contingency, like any other project. So, not saying that we don't want to partner, I agree that.
Well, that's what you are saying. It's either we are or we don't.
Well, we are or we don't, if the contingency is not used up. If the contingency is not used up, what do we need to do? We still have a cross lane to be worked out, there's other things that we can partner on that we can still be partners.
Go ahead, Gordon.
I would like to ask Marty, what the school borrowed, how much they received in borrowing, and what the contract was, and what the difference is. That, I understood that there was more money borrowed than the contract was led for.
No, I mean, we borrowed the 19.5 million at this point in time. The total project, about 24.5 million, we're gonna have to borrow against save dollars now. And we'll do that here this coming spring. But what to do to make up the difference for the rest of it?
Was the, did the contract come in for less than what the original estimate was?
I think it was about 28 is where we were with that, and then you put in the fees. That's where you get that total, 24. I can't think of the exact number right off the top of my head, Gordon. But again, we were only able to borrow 19.5 million dollars, so anything extra beyond that is borrowing against our state. And that will be the bonds here, like I said, this spring.
Well, the way I understood, what I read, was perhaps incorrect, but I, it looked, like when I read the newspaper, that more money was the contract was for less than what was expected.
And that's not the case. So, like I said, when you put in all the different fees, you're still looking right around that 24, 24.5 million dollars. And then, we're only able to do the 19.5 based on that $3.25 tax. Then the rest of it will be borrowed against our state. That's what we did for the geothermal system, which came off books last year. We borrowed against save also for, I'm fed out for taxes. But we borrowed against save or the practice gym in that area out there, which is about 7%. We're a little antsy as to how much we can borrow against our state at this point in time. But we'd be able to borrow enough to use it off the project. And that contingency is right around 7% is where the, for the contingency.
Has any contingency been used? Yet.
We've had.
You may not know.
You know, but again, it's just so early in the project. Those are two words I learned to hate real quick. But, things seem to have gone well, and we've kind of do some things, just based on some of the infrastructure out there. And at this point, it's already in the project. I was gonna ask, would it help if we drew it out instead of three years, we went five years, six years? I mean, so it's less amount. And if that would make a difference.
Probably.
It's not that big of a strain.
The way I see it is, the city's getting an improved street. You know, for what that's worth, we get a little bit, the city does. In my mind, we should pay for a little bit. I don't see how we can demand that school go alone on this completely. I know we'd love to make developers pay for all their turn lanes and all their street improvements. Doesn't always work out that way.
I think Casey's hasn't paid for theirs, and I believe Axiona.
Oh, we paid for Casey's.
The widening of the.
We paid for every rebate in Casey's, a ton of 500,000 or so for that street up there.
My comment is, I still want to see the local roads doing. Somebody, there was a comment in here that they're gonna take out the curb. And they're going to.
We don't know yet.
It's somewhere in our packet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, we don't worry about?
We don't know what they're doing yet. It's, we need to sit down with this Johnson County engineer and find out what they want to do. And we might say what they want to do, but we probably don't have a lot of say how they enter our town. But I don't think it has a lot to do with what happens with this turn lane, because they're 700 yards apart, probably, I don't know, 500 yards away, the two projects.
You're gonna have a lot of traffic coming through on that.
That's a real need for a turn lane. That's why a real need for a turn lane.
With Interstate 80 being redone. There's going to be a ton of traffic. And what I'm getting at is, if we're gonna do the north side, you're gonna have to put a turn lane in to go to the club.
Make a right turn?
Yeah. You keep. And I wouldn't be surprised if Cedar Johnson, Johnson County should be putting a turn lane in.
They may think about a left turn lane from Johnson, a left turn lane from Johnson County.
Right.
To Cedar Johnson Road.
Right. They are doing that?
I don't know. No, I don't know. That's what we don't know yet. I don't know where I'm at. You can't, if this were spread out over six years instead of three, what is that? That's 25,000 a year?
I just hate to, I just hate for the Cedar, or for the Johnson County thing, road to mess up. And us ending up having to pay costs to make it match, to make a matchup on our side.
Well, I think, to an extent, I think whoever's the first one in is gonna be the right one. I mean, if we hold off on this and they put their road in, then we're gonna have to match up to them. But if we have ours in, then they gotta kind of come to us, and they gotta make that work. That's on them, that ain't on us. You get what I'm saying?
Well, they don't have to come into West Branch.
Right.
They could stop right at the county line and call it quits. Which, once again, is 300 to 500 yards away from the beginning of this turn lane. They're not really connected to each other.
So where does this fall for the washout? That we keep putting on?
This scenario.
It doesn't do anything because we're not putting a curb there.
Right.
So.
That just costs more money.
Even a curb wasn't gonna help it, all you were doing was just gonna push it. You're not stopping the washout, you're just moving where it's gonna show up at. You really got.
So are we gonna put a culvert in, or a drain, or something? To help with that? If we're gonna do this, you might, we might, we'll do it the right way, instead of having to go back and fix it however many, three years from now. Costs us even, once we finally get this paid for, now we're gonna have to come up with more money to pay to fix.
The washout.
The washout that we've had since four years ago. Actually, longer than that.
Okay, let me ask Marty. What's your cutoff date that you need to know something? Because maybe we could get together with Johnson County in the next couple of months. Get that figured out.
I mean, ideally, the sooner the better, so that design can be done and get out to bid. You know, right at the end of the year, because again, that's when you're gonna be the best ones. You try and do something from next summer. Yeah. We try to wait, and then people get booked, and then they're gonna get hired bids, because they already have the job to just let them go. That's what we run into in the past. I can get ahold of Dave and also get a better feel of how long design would be. I know he was talking into September, they were hoping to get started, but.
September to do design work? Is that what you said?
It'll take a couple months, probably. And you get the bids outs, and then get bids back in, you have about four, five weeks or so.
January bid process, December, January.
I guess one thing I look at is why why would we be having the school design this? It's gonna be a city street, why wouldn't we have our own engineer design it?
Because they've decided to design it. They can spend the 40 grand on engineering, I guess. Instead of us, even though we're gonna spend a little money, okay, on it, reviewing it.
I thought the engineering cost was all part of what he was adding together, so we're paying half the engineering cost anyway.
Engineering administration. Could creep up there to the 300, to administrate it.
You don't want us designing them, having them fit it out, because then you got too many contractors involved in issuing the bids and stuff.
Yeah.
Mike.
So, I guess, let me ask this question to the council. Would a lower amount be more desirable? No.
Question's that, hell yeah. You know, but, but, the question I would have for you guys is, if we TIF this, which is what is suggested in the resolution. If we TIF'd it, it's actually kind of better, because then we get to still use their money again to pay a third of them back. A third of their money to pay them back with.
And county money.
And the county's money.
So.
Could we, let me finish my question.
Sorry.
Could we use, and then that would come out of our general fund, or all of it, but then it'd come back to us somehow, I don't know exactly how that works. It would, part of it would be, still come out of our general fund. Would we be able to, since it was a road project, could we reimburse our general fund with road use tax?
Well, we might as well just have it come out of road use tax.
If it was available.
But I don't.
You can't just automatically assume that's gonna be there.
Yeah, I think, right now, things don't look very good for road use tax in terms of spending down our surplus from last year in the current year.
Well, I get that, but I mean, I'm talking about, you know, $150,000 over six years. I mean, that's only.
We could just pay it our road use tax, wouldn't have to be paid back to the general fund.
Okay.
So in theory, if it's TIF, actual one-third of that.
We just don't know for sure those many years out. That's all.
If it's TIF'd, at $50,000 a year, and we ask for a, we ask for a TIF, asking $50,000 a year, one-third of that comes out of our general fund. So the actual cost may only be, what is that, 18, 20?
Between 15 and 20.
50,000 out of 150.
That, would that be our actual cost?
You're right, but there's mechanics of.
Out of our general fund.
That, that doesn't necessarily give a true.
It hurts a little worse than they make.
Well, we gotta incur the expense first.
And remember, this, we, we file every year. So when we're occurring debt, we're now carrying, so this was dead pieces in cash.
Yeah, we carry it for eighteen and nineteen.
We're always talking cash flow issues because we're always carrying that with the anticipation that we're going to actually file for reimbursement of that debt, that future year. So we do that enough, you wind up carrying a, a whole lot of debt with not having a lot of cash on hand.
I mean, we're gonna get, we're gonna get our two-thirds back, but we had to pay that two-thirds before we get.
Well, you gotta incur the debt first.
Yeah, that's all, that's, that's why it's not like a magic bullet. When you say that, it's like, okay, yeah, there's still a lot of.
I didn't mean it to be a magic bullet, but the truth is, the actual cost.
You don't wanna have.
May only be about fifty thousand dollars plus interest.
You know what I mean? Cause then we wind up just, it's like paying off credit cards with other credit cards. At some, at some point in time, you gotta stop that.
Paying off a credit card, but it's like somebody else's money.
It's like a payday loan.
The county's money.
Until it comes in, but until it comes in, it's your money.
Yeah, but if you.
You can set this payment schedule up to try to match that.
Where you, you make the payment and hopefully sixty days later.
No, you make the payment when you get your tip money in.
You get the, you get the money twice a year from the county. Then you get half at one point, half another point.
But in the meantime, we have to carry, I, I don't know.
That's, that's great if we're like starting anew and we have a plan, but we're picking up from already kind of a bad plan, trying to get ahead.
So what's a bad plan?
Bad plan is the previous projects that we've been trying to scramble to keep on paying, um, tipping for, running it out and moving money from various funds. You've been with me right along. We've been doing this since I got here.
Cities have been doing that since the beginning of time.
That's not probably the best way to do it. Let me just say that. I don't wanna keep on doing it. That's not, that's not the best way we can handle it.
Apparently the way we're going at it right now, we're never gonna get ahead.
Well, we're making ground. We are. We're, we're much better off. We're nowhere close to eighty percent of our debt capacity. That's, that's what we were and.
We're above that.
Eighty-one, eighty-two.
Yeah, well, it's, that's, you don't even wanna say that out loud.
Then why do we do any projects whatsoever, whatsoever? Why, why would we even consider Johnson, Cedar Johnson Road?
It's a bit of a problem.
The way, the dire story you're telling me, why are we doing anything?
We, we have to pay so much of our debt back now. That's why we don't have.
We wanna do Cedar Johnson Road. It's gonna be what, four million dollar project?
Critical project. So if you're going to, if you're going to take the.
This isn't a critical project.
Take the sword on that. That's, that's, that's the, like, we took the sword on Covey Park. That was, that was it. That was our big thing. Well, we're gonna probably have another big thing and we're gonna be trying to recoup from that. It's the small things along, along the way that, that winds up derailing us. We gotta have a plan. That's what I'm saying. We just, we're never gonna deal with a capital improvement plan this year. Put it on there so you can see everything and realize where we really are. Maybe I make it look too easy or something. It's just not that fun of a deal. We have to be, this is the time where it's starting to come out. We just gotta be responsible on how we do it.
So what's your, what's your answer then? It's a no. You're, you're saying just a no. Your big no to the school.
I, I put my.
Is that what you're saying?
In the write-up. I'm saying, hey, if seven percent contingency is not a break contingency, I'm gonna say that, but let that be used before we are on the hook. Let's make sure that's, it's been exploited, it's spent and before we're on the hook. I like the idea of multiple years. That does cushion the blow.
This project isn't gonna be done on, what, January twenty-one? No. They won't know where they're at until it's done on a contingency.
And it's just.
We're never, you never know where at on the contingency until it's over.
In your construction plan, you just have to move forward. Like it's not holding and waiting it. You just move forward and see how you come out at the end of the day. And at the end of the day, when the contingency look like it's spent, then the city comes in with its portion and hopefully that's enough. If not, then just like everybody else, you have to go back to your finances. We've been over budget before. You know what happens? This is, this is just like any other project. I think we're, we're making it special because it's the school district where they're doing the developer and they asked us the same thing. Would we be saying the same thing? Cause they're looking. They're going to be asking us the same thing. Why did you do this and not that?
I would think we'd be a better partner with the school than we would be with a developer. Who's gonna, who's just out there to make money. And the school's out there to, you know, survive and make, educate our kids.
Sounds like you need more time.
Apparently.
Are we, are we even sure we won't do the cheapest? In my opinion, no.
We can't even decide on the cheapest. I mean, we're not even gonna do that, Jody.
Okay, so.
It's a big, it's a big no so far.
My scenario on that is, this, this is something that is not on our radar.
Right.
Okay, so whatever, whatever the cheapest is, would last us at least ten years, which would be at least ten years before we would probably even start thinking about doing anything with that section of the road.
The cheapest wouldn't though, Jerry, because it's the north side and the asphalt and then, and that's where we wash out. So you're gonna wash out the asphalt.
No, no, no. The, the washout is the, the gravel on the edge of the shoulder.
To do curb and gutter on that's, just that side only, I think was put it at four, four twenty.
Five oh four.
And we can, we've been mad on, he can probably tell us what this asphalt and the shoulders.
Which we were gonna do.
Which is already got a number for that. It'd be a lot cheaper than putting a curb and gutter on, just put an asphalt edge on there to take care of the erosion.
That's not gonna wash out.
No. It'd be to the grass and then it runs into the grass.
But it won't be a turn lane.
Yeah.
You can asphalt the shoulder, but.
It'd just be probably three feet of asphalt from the edge.
Okay, so, um, not getting a number from anybody, alternative number. That's why this was left blank for the number. We have a motion in a second, but we can't come in, we can't seem to fill in the blank for a number. So, uh, I think it's gonna die at this time. Well, next cycle's not gonna change anything. Next meeting, we need to get our budget to get, we need to get.
I'd be willing to put a number in there, but somebody gotta tell me how we're gonna pay for it.
Maybe we can craft, craft a plan by next cycle or cycle after.
Ain't gonna happen, I'm sure.
I'm trying to help you out, Rodney.
You have to plan. I mean, your mind's made up already, right? I mean, you're, you're, you're gonna use their contingency.
Well.
You're, yeah. You've already said that.
I've said that, yeah, more than just tonight.
They got, they're on their own until their contingency's burned up and then.
But even then, I don't, I still don't know a hundred percent of how our payments are, are to be done. We haven't even sat down and talked about this in any detail. We need a multiple year look of where the money's going to come from for this project. And I think we can, we can, it's, it's not, it's not going to be a super impact based on multiple years, but we have to make sure that works with everything else that we're looking at. And we haven't done that part. Now, I know for council, they, you know, you're expecting to do that till we do our capital improvement plan, which we put that on hold because we had so many other capital improvements that had to be done, that we barely had the money for it to make those work. We didn't do any new capital improvements over the last three years, I've been here because of that. My first year back here, we were a shortfall of, I think it was sixty or seventy thousand.
Well, the bridge, the bridge was the final capital improvement project.
So I mean, you know, we say fifty thousand dollars. Well, we had to raise taxes for seventy thousand dollars three years ago. That's a big deal for us. So we need a plan. That's all I'm saying. I don't know, and I think we say we can do it because it's small when you take it for individually, but then when it starts rolling up into everything else that we got commitments to or soft commitments to or visions for or whatever, and all of a sudden, we can't do it.
So why don't we do this? Instead of just tabling it and starting this whole conversation over again, let's come up with an amount that we would possibly be willing to, to, to pay and then send them the task to go figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Anyone got any?
So here's the number I'm gonna.
One twenty, one.
I'll throw the number out right now. I don't think we should have to pay for the engineering of the contingency. This is their project. It's not our project. I don't think we should have to pay for the utilities because it's not our project. It's their project. But we would split the cost fifty-fifty on the, what was it, two, two forty or something like that?
Two sixty.
Two sixty, but that included thirty, thirty some thousand to move.
Take that thirty-six thousand, two twenty-four.
That's when the utility's out.
That's the construction cost is two twenty-four.
Hundred and twelve thousand, just fifty percent of that.
Very good.
I was educated at West Branch. Is this, that's, that's a proposal, that's a.
So is this a requirement? Pardon? Like, if we don't, I mean, I'm sure Marty can probably answer to it. I mean, is it a requirement on the project to do this or is this something that if, say we don't give them any money, you're just not gonna do? I didn't, I, you weren't here last time. I was gonna ask that was just, is this a requirement of the project? Like they came in and. So it's not something then if we just don't give you any money, you just kind of push it aside and decide not to do it?
We might have to wait for multiple years. I think we have what, five?
That's another alternative. We just do nothing.
That was gonna be my question.
Till it becomes a problem.
That was kind of my question. Is it something that if we don't give them any money, they're just not gonna do? It sounds like they got four or five years to do it. I mean, that's kind of, and I only bring that up. It's a good question because if, if it's found to not be an issue, does the survey, the report, are you required to no matter what?
I would probably defer to Guss. I'm pretty certain since you guys asked.
We did the site plan for the school. Was that, when Dave did the review, that was a requirement of the, of the, uh, through the site plan, I believe.
To do the study.
When you do a study, you, you have to follow what's in the study then. And if they said it doesn't need to be done for four or five years or there's some, sometimes the studies say if X, X happens, then you have to do it. X never happens, then.
So that was something we should find out if that, that is something that has to be done. If, if certain parameters are, are met, then it has to be done.
Let's use what the studies say if, if there's a certain.
That was gonna be my question and it's, and that's what I was gonna pose to you guys. It's one of those things is, do we beat it to death now and then take the risk or the gamble that this doesn't turn into the nightmare that we think it's going to be? Or do we run into the fact that all of a sudden it turns into a nightmare and all of a sudden, hey, we gotta do this?
Nightmare would be someone gets rear-ended trying to turn left and.
Or worse.
My, my question would be because of the interstate, that data's gonna be skewed for how many years? So how are you really gonna know for sure?
That's true. Well, here's the scenario I have for that. The actual route for the interstate, when it comes off from, because of the interstate being backed up, it's supposed to go south to six.
We could shut it down.
We could shut it down.
Yeah, we could shut it down through West Branch.
If they get our DOT branch from here on out. They just gave us a million dollars for the bridge.
Yeah. But.
I'm fine with letting it ride, letting it ride. I'm, I'm.
I'm not, because every time we've ever let anything ride as a city, we take it right up to Keenster every single time.
Well, I mean, if we could look at the study and say, okay, we can find the conditions, and I understand the I eighty thing would skew everything. Let's talk to, let me talk to Dave and see what, if we just have an agreement that says, okay, we're not gonna do this now and if this happens, we'll.
And our construction cost gonna be cheaper five years from now?
But here's the other scenario of that. If it's five years, that's five years closer to the, the ten years, that scenario I keep coming up with it. That's maybe the time that we end up having to do something with that road anyway.
Because we gotta wait five, six years until it's a problem. Five, six years from now, we might have enough money just to do Johnson Cedar and then that part right there.
What if we, what if we've already done Johnson Cedar and now we've already strapped ourselves again and we're back in the same position? And, and then all of a sudden it comes a big problem and needs to be taken care of right now, then we can't do anything.
So that's gotta be put on the scope of a capital project plan. We will know more. We get through the budget process. We're gonna know more. We could, what's a, we could throw in forty thousand a year. We could pencil it in over the next three years or as a budget item, if it's a hundred and twelve thousand. We'll know more what Cedar Johnson, what Hoover Highway's gonna do by, by the time we're working on our budget. We'll know a lot more by January, February, as we're working on our budget. We may have to wait till then, Marty. We really might have to wait till then to get you a solid answer.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what your guys', I thought process on it. Do you want it done right away or is it something that's, you going to wait or? What kind of concerns do you guys have on waiting?
That you're seeing out west, out to the west, I, I think it's just gonna be, um, I mean, the numbers from the study showed that middle school going out there was nothing. Changed any different from when the study was done five, five years ago. Increased traffic was because of the development out there. I think that you're just gonna see that.
Well, we're not gonna vote anything tonight, I don't think. Unless you wanna throw in a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. I'm looking for a number to land or we're gonna table it.
Trying to think traffic wise.
We need a number or we're gonna table it for a while.
Development's gonna have that many people and there's that many people going to the school in the morning. I mean, if I would have, I'd probably not go to Main Street.
I was.
And compound the issue, you're gonna set that stop sign and wait for all the kids and the buses to turn in or you're just gonna take the left out of your driveway and then go go down the other way towards nursing home and, I mean, I don't think we're gonna get twenty car line there. If you know the school's there every morning, there's other ways.
Oh, there's people that don't think like that though.
And they can sit there for, and they can sit there for a half hour. Traffic's coming from the east. They're gonna be to the east, let you turn in if they're sitting there waiting.
There will be a second way out of town in a few weeks.
Right.
When.
Cedar Johnson Road will get real busy then.
Sullivan Street, wherever street that goes through.
Yeah.
Okay, any direction? Give me a number or, or we're gonna quit.
Another scenario I'd have, just to throw another one out here, would be to do like a hundred thousand dollars towards it and we wait two years before we would are paying it. That would give us two years to figure out how to pay for it.
So I got a hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, there's multiple things. I mean, I know Marty's just already willing to extend it out to six years. I don't know if they'd be willing to take the three hundred thousand dollar hit and wait for three years to get it. Well, Redman brings a good point up that, you know, there is a contingency there and I don't know.
Well, Redman brings a good point up that, you know, there is a contingency there and I don't know, I don't know what the number is, but seven percent of twenty million is like one point four million. It's a pretty good chunk. I hope that, I hope that they wouldn't run into too many. That means snakes, but.
Point seven.
Got a long way to go. It seems like a lot.
That's my thought, but. I know how contingencies go over and you don't see something, but.
Especially when they get into the recon, reconstruction half of the other side of the building.
Okay, I've a hundred and twelve thousand. I got a hundred thousand or we're gonna table it. Does anybody?
We're, my number, I was gonna table, I mean, table, I wasn't ready to vote. I was ready to give them a number to go figure out.
You're right. That's what you said. That's right.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're at. So we looking at a three year, six year?
Why don't we have them give us all those options?
That's right. Three to six year payout. Somewhat, somewhat over a hundred thousand, hundred thousand or plus. Okay?
Who?
Do I have to vote on it? No, I don't not go vote on it, but how do I?
Deal it to a future meeting and have a vote on that.
You brought the motion.
So can I vote our motion to table it?
You motioned to table this resolution or the motion?
Resolution.
Table the resolution to a future date. I'll need a second on that. Is that your motion?
Yeah, I motioned to table.
You need a second on that. Tom? So we have a motion to second to table this to a future date. Any discussion on that particular motion and then we'll, uh, vote to, to table it. Okay, we're gonna vote to table.
Councilperson Goodwayland.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Our leader, nothing. Decided nothing.
Damn it.
So much for results oriented.
Can I make one quick, can I make one quick comment about this? And it's not meant to be rude or mean or anything, but we do this a lot. And I don't know if it's just getting old to me or is it just getting old in general, but if we got stuff like this on here, we should just, those numbers should be ready. It's getting a little bit old bringing all this stuff up and then asking for how we can pay for it or the plan to pay for it and then all we get is, I have no idea.
Yeah, well, the proposal was weeks ago, months ago, to do a hundred and fifty. And I, I didn't put a hundred and fifty on there because I wanted to give you guys a choice.
My point is, is if that was last meeting or a month ago, then we should have had the questions answered when we go, hey, how are we gonna pay for this? Like it shouldn't be brought back unless Redmond and Gordon are aware of, hey, this is the number we want and this is how we're gonna pay for it. This is how we could potentially pay for it. Otherwise, we sit here for an hour debating something that we have no answers for.
Well, and I was.
So it shouldn't even make, in my, just saying, it shouldn't even make it on here unless those numbers are known. So when we ask that question, that makes any sense.
Yeah, but when they requested to be on.
Yeah, I know. I get it, but I mean, like, can't you say, hey, I don't have any of this information. Can we wait? I mean, that's all I'm saying.
This has been on the agenda for, or we've been talking about this for two months.
That's kind of my point.
And we still haven't gotten any results.
Yeah, that's kind of my point is if we bring it up for a discussion the first time.
Why don't we have any results? Because we don't know how we're gonna pay for it for one.
Yeah, but.
We don't even know if we should pay for it for two.
Yeah, we shouldn't bring it back as a resolution until they have time to get those. That's all I'm saying, because we, we do this a whole lot.
Well, we talked August third.
I know, but that's why, but it should come back to an actual resolution item after discussion and so.
This is the first resolution item we've had on that.
I know, but I'm just saying, there's plenty other resolutions we've done that we have no numbers on that we sit here and debate for an hour. And then what it turns into is, hey, can you guys get these numbers? And all of a sudden, boom, they get the numbers. Next time we come back and ask an app, we both, we actually come up with a real reason.
I'll go a step further. There's, there's a lot. I mean, even, we got two of them, the, the officer thing. That's that further down. How are we gonna pay for it? You know, that's probably an answer that it's gonna come out of the general fund. That's always the answer to it. Well, if it's gonna come out of the general fund, then that means it's coming away from something. You know, any, anytime we have something where we gotta spend money, we should, we should, we should have to know where that money is coming from before we ever vote on it. Because if you're voting on it, you don't know how it's gonna get paid for. You, you don't know how you're doing.
That's gonna be my question for that. I don't know if they have the numbers for that.
Okay.
That's all I'm getting at. It's just, we keep, we keeps running the same certain, and it's not just this topic. It's several. We've had several of these where we sit here and just run around in a circle and tell her like, hey, can you get the numbers? And they get the numbers and all of a sudden, boom, it's done. But we've talked about it for an hour for six meetings.
Yeah, they don't even know what to get the number for. We don't even know which one we're gonna do.
But either way, you could still come, either you don't do it or you do it. I mean, you can still come up with those numbers. That's all I'm saying.
You guys ready to move on? Something really simple. Legal descriptions. All right, Resolución nineteen thirty-six, revising legal descriptions for past resolutions seventeen forty and seventeen forty-three. To clarify the boundaries of some West Branch urban renewal areas. Give me a motion, someone. Bolton and Nick. This is legal mumble junk.
Did not like it when your, I put weeds and bounds descriptions for subdivisions and they said that I couldn't do that, which I disagree with completely, but so when this is, we're gonna do this, they correct everything now. Next meeting, we're gonna bring the organs back for little lights to make sure that gets, the tip gets started on that. And then when Meadows Part Four B gets recorded, we will add to this resolution because they said I couldn't use that legal description, which.
They don't like A and B. They want it all one.
Well, they didn't like it because it wasn't platted. Just like remember the, uh, Crowell's site when we had the legal description of three pages long and they made us do a survey? Same thing here.
They didn't, they didn't like him calling it over yonder.
Yeah. Six steps from the big rock.
About six steps.
So this is just a cleanup of it really. And I ran it through the county first. This is not kind of like, this is not, this is the legal description they wanna see. So I'd worked that up with them before we adopted it.
Okay, any other discussion? Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodwayland.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yes.
Okay. Item three, four versus five, police officers. Who wants to start?
Chief sat up in his chair.
He sure did.
Turned on his video. Give us your sales.
Go ahead, chief. You're, you're the chief. Um, you're gonna start. Four versus five. Turn it on.
Hear me okay? Um, originally, uh, the, uh, when we proposed. Can you hear me okay or not?
Maybe turn the volume on.
He's gonna start over. He'll try again. All right, anybody else?
Shoot.
We've had four for. We've got five right now as a temporary stopgap until the chief retires. Um, add issue there is when the chief retires, we'll have four without a fire, without a chief. We recruit the, if we recruit the new chief from within, we would stay at four. If we go outside and get a new chief from outside, we would be back to five.
Uh, do you guys hear me now?
Kind of laying out the playing field, I guess.
Am I first again?
I'll go first.
Go first, Jody.
I know a lot's been promised. And I wasn't a part of that.
This is not a mic.
Oh, there you go. I got you now, Mike. Hang on, Jody's talking, so we're gonna let Jody, Jody speak.
I wasn't a part of that whole thing.
One, two, testing.
But, um, and I've talked to the person that you guys have made promises to.
You guys hear me now?
And, uh, this whole thing of managers being outside of the city limits, I'm against. But that was a different council that made that decision. I have a problem with a police chief living seven miles out of town. When an officer needs backup, in West Branch, we are at a very high disadvantage. Because there's only one officer usually on at a time. Um, I don't believe Iowa City's ten miles away. And that's if somebody's right on the east side. Um, Cedar County deputies are twenty-two miles away. They're never on this side of the river. Unless they're needed on Interstate eighty. We have West Liberty, ten miles away. Mechanicsville, I don't even know, fourteen. So our officers that are on duty, their backup is ways out. And this day and age, times have changed. I don't care what anybody says. West Branch is not in that bubble that nothing's going to ever happen here. Nobody can guarantee that. I would love it if nothing ever happened here. But I don't believe that it's another officer's job to have to stay home and be a possible backup. I believe a police chief gets paid very well. And they should have a plan and themselves included as backups. That's my say. Uh, Williamsburg has seven officers. I went and looked to see what officers or what departments have on Interstate eighty. Polfax has four. Grinnell has ten. Walcott has four plus a K nine. Williamsburg has seven. So. What's that tell you? I don't know.
Walcott's about the same size we are or smaller. Williamsburg is larger than we are. In population. Grinnell's a lot bigger.
I did some looking.
Grinnell's a lot bigger.
I did some looking too. And that's the thing that got added to our agenda was what I had found. And it's got more answers than most people can even understand. But one of the things that it said was is that the average, the average amount of officers per thousand people is two point five to one point eight. So we've had four officers, we would be on the low end and five officers would be on the high end. The very next, the very next, because I thought that would be a good way to judge. The very next paragraph said that that's a moronic way to look at it. So. And it, so like, I guess I'm wrong, because that's the way I was looking at it. And it gave a whole bunch of other things about oh, peak times and I guess my question is, is the whole idea of the five officers was twenty-four, seven coverage, correct? Do we have twenty-four, seven coverage right now today?
No.
No.
We have five officers. We've had five officers since July. So five officers isn't gonna give us twenty-four, seven.
Well, I'm also saying a lot of times that we have two officers on days.
Because four hours, four officers can give us twenty-four, seven. If you just have twelve hour shifts, sixty-six, you have two officers in the morning, two officers in the evening, and they work four on, three off. They work opposite each other. Twenty-four hour coverage, seven days a week. Four officers.
I was talking to the chief and since he, I don't know if he can put it in or not, but I was talking to the chief today about that and a, a lot of the challenges covering, covering vacations and times off or sick times and all those kinds of things that make logistically four hours a difficult task. So part-time, so what we were talking about is creating maybe more robust part-time usage because right now some departments that have the same type of number, they might have six part-time guys because you have a longer list of people that you can peek from to cover on those moments when you, one, don't know that, say, a sick, a sick situation come up or something like family emergency come up and you don't, you can't plan for that. Well, you have a longer list. Right, right now, we only really have one and maybe two, you can make the argument for. So, um, maybe having six of a list of kind of like the bench that you can pull up might help. Um, but chief, you, you know, Kate, are you up? Because I don't wanna try and put words in your mouth.
Go ahead, Mike, if you're available.
Yeah, Mike, do you hear me now?
Yeah.
Getting a little feedback. Yeah, originally, uh, we had it figured out. Um, you know, we had, uh, budgeted for officers. Uh, in our budget process for this year, uh, we recommended we hire, uh, Kathy. Uh, as a result, uh, we have it budgeted, uh, for five officers. Uh, what brought in the question was if I left, you know, if they were, um, gonna hire, uh, another officer to replace my position. And so that's what came up. I did a little background and, and, uh, it's, you know, community kind of decides what come, what kind of or how much law enforcement they want. And this is what we're asking the council to do. Uh, we can do whatever the council requests. Uh, if the city has budget issues, you know, certainly we can work around that. Uh, I called West Liberty. Uh, West Liberty, they do not have any on call. They have six officers. And I think they've got like, um, you know, um, three or four part-time. Uh, I think, oh, I have six part-time in West Liberty and two reserves. Walcott, they have a deal where they have three full-time officers, but when they're not working, uh, Scott County takes call for them. Uh, Clarence, uh, there was an officer up there, worked twenty-four hours a day, expected to be on call three hundred sixty-five days a year. They lost that officer. He took another job. And, uh, so, uh, Clarence will probably end up being a contract town. Tipton, uh, they have six full-time officers, including the chief. They have no on-call time. Uh, part-time, they have three to five, uh, part-time people, reserves. They have two. Now, things right now are not probably as they would be typically with five officers. Uh, originally with COVID, um, we would have, uh, officers staying in the school probably thirty hours a week. But with COVID and things, reduced classes and this, that and the other thing, we don't have or in there near as much. So we have Kathy covering the day shift on Saturday and Sunday. Uh, the, the only thing I'd request is when we hired Kathy, we considered that Kathy worked part-time for us for twenty hours. So we basically, uh, got rid of those, um, twenty hours, put it into Kathy's, what her schedule would have been working, uh, which she would have worked necessarily. The only thing I would ask is if you guys keep, if you want four officers, I would, I would hope that we would have a part-time budget to make up any shortfalls we have of, let's say, 20 hours a week for part-time people come in. Part-time people are awful hard to locate because, you know, a lot of times they're full-time officers or their departments. And we call them to work, either they're thankful, they're thankful they have a day off on a weekend and they don't really want to work a weekend for us. So we're really kind of in a tough spot right here. If you want just four full-time officers and save my salary for a period of time, you know, we can do that, especially doing this COVID thing. We could make it, make it work. The only thing I was ask is if I would get a part-time budget. And if I left and you guys didn't re, re, replace my, replace me with another officer, we would have that, plenty of money left over because everything we've done has already been budgeted. So I basically will put it back on the council. You know, it, it, you know, even with five officers, I can't guarantee you 24-hour coverage with holidays, weekends. And we had an officer with his offer about four weeks for paternity leave. You know, things happen. You know, a lot of officers, a lot of departments that have around-the-clock coverage, 24 hours a day have physically have a car out, and they have six officers. And I don't think the city's ready to go to six officers at this point. So. If you guys want to maintain for four for a period of time to see how we do and give me a part-time budget, you know, we can make that work. There was talk too, when I leave, if we do keep five officers reworking the schedule, so we have more coverage. But one thing our department has that it's almost, is kind of a disadvantage and this is why it's so hard to get officers come to our department is we have on-call time. When an officer works a weekend, he works 10 hours and he's typically on-call for the rest of that weekend. So when I have Officer Steen working, I kind of have her offset that day shift on Saturday and Sunday. So that's my recommendation. I, I don't really have a recommendation. I'm just saying that I will go with what the council wants. And is there any questions you have for me?
Mike, I have a question. Do, does Cedar County, are there any talks that they could help us out in any way? Or they are not want to help at all?
Our call volume is high enough and some of our cases can be rather involved. You know, they've covered the base short-term on a time or two when officers are sick or whatever. But that's not something they want to take on long-term. At one time, we're, I was having a discussion with the sheriff a number of years ago. And I says, instead of hiring another officer, what would it cost to have you guys cover our shift when we don't have an officer available? And, and this has been a number of years ago, but the number of 100 grand came up. And it sounds like a lot of money, but by the time you buy a squad car and get another officer on the road, that's probably what you have in it. So. So I, I think Cedar County would be willing to help us short-term. But, you know, you have, when the counties are involved in a situation, they will typically enforce things that involve state code. They don't usually like to get involved in things that are covered in the city ordinance, like maybe noise or dog complaints and things like that. So that is a, an option. We could check with Cedar County to see what it would cost us for them to cover our shift. When I made that, when I talked to him here several years ago about that, it was kind of off the cuff. It wasn't anything that we're agreed upon or was a hard, fast number.
When you, when you say cover your shift, would that mean that there'd be an officer in town? Or would it be just they'd be in Cedar County and they'd be in Tipton and be on-call?
Well, if we worked out an agreement like Walcott has, we would have them cover call when we weren't working. When we physically don't have an officer out. There's a number of times, let's say, we're on-call, let's say, Saturday morning. We, let's say, on a particular Saturday, we don't have anyone out. If there's a call that comes in of a car crash, we typically have to call one of our officers out, which is a lot of times overtime. And the, in order for that county to cover that call and not call us out, I'm sure they'd want to have some kind of restitution, some kind of payback. A lot of these smaller cities that can't afford to hire their own police department will enter into a, a contract with the county sheriff's department to promise so many hours of patrol time. It's my understanding that the sheriff does not want to get, last time I talked to him anyway, does not want to get taught, tied into that kind of scenario where he's tied in to respond to our calls.
Are there certain hours of the week where, okay, I'm just gonna say it, Sunday morning, we don't need an officer on duty Sunday morning. You drive through this town, there's five cars on the street.
Well, you'd be surprised.
Midnight, Saturday night, okay, 3:00 AM Saturday night. All day Sunday, I, I, I'd like to have someone available, but not driving around full-time on, on patrol. I don't think is necessary. But having someone on-call absolutely has to be important.
Well, we typically don't pay our officers on-call. So they're sitting at home waiting for a call that may or may not come in. And they're sitting at home and, you know, it's the quality of life, you know. There's an expectation they have to stay in the city limits when they're on-call. And the city doesn't pay officers for on-call time. So they're not getting reimbursed for sitting in and home waiting for a call. Sunday mornings are kind of one of those weird days. There's times where you're right, we don't get a call. And then there's other times where we'd get three or four calls because of things that happened on Saturday night. So it's, you're right, Sundays are generally quiet. But I don't think you can necessarily plan that we won't get a call on those times. So, I mean, we don't provide 24-hour coverage now. So on a Saturday morning, that's, we're on-call. And that officer that's, you know, works until 3 o'clock in the morning or so will have to get up and cover a crash at 7 o'clock in the morning. And that happens at come and go, let's say. And, you know, there's one of the things, you know, and we're probably going to be talking about in budget processes, is probably paying officers for being on-call. Most of your hospitals and most of your police departments do pay officers to be on-call. Different people have different opinions over the Fair Labor Standard Act. Some people's opinion is that you have to pay a person for being on-call.
We used to. I know a nurse at the university, he gets 10% of his salary just for being on-call. And then if he does get called in, it's full salary pay.
And I don't want to be like the other situation that came up earlier. I don't want to complicate the issue. All I'm basically saying is your guys' decision. We are budgeted for five. If you want to save money and just give us four and give us some options to hire some part-time people, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Our schedules can be somewhat complicated and it's, it would probably get to be a long drawn-out affair if I sat down and explained to everyone how our schedule fits in this venue. But, but, you know, all I can say is, you know, if you want officers out 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we're probably going to have to take the model that Tipton and West Liberty doesn't have, six officers. Even with five officers, I cannot guarantee 24-hour coverage.
A lot of the consensus in the, in the view that I talk to you is that we don't need 24-hour coverage. The question I have for you, Mike, is when somebody's on-call and they get called out, you're saying they don't get paid for being on-call, but when they get called out, are they paid the hour that they're out there? Or do they get, do they get paid like for two hours? If they're there for an hour, do they get paid for two hours like some do?
Yes. If they are, get called out and it's, it's basically a, a police standard in a lot of police agencies. If you physically get called out, you automatically get two hours.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, that's fair.
Absolutely.
Right. Even if it's 45 minutes, one hour, done.
Right.
Minimum.
Yeah. And, you know, we talked to one time when we were a smaller department and we're much smaller than we were, you know, do we want to not do car unlocks because we don't have a car out? And do you want to reduce services? Or no matter what the call is, we get a fair number of dog calls during Saturdays and Sundays and, and things like that. I mean, so our officers will typically get called out for that and handle that situation. So we, one thing, since I've been in here, we, we physically don't have people out 24 hours a day, but I, we provide 24 hours of coverage. There's never been a time that I'm aware of where we didn't have somebody that was available, either working or on-call. We take that pretty seriously. When somebody calls in at 3 o'clock on a Sunday afternoon about a dog call or about a theft, they want to have an officer come out, coming out and being there. And you're right, I, I, you know, I would somewhat agree with the mayor in some capacity that Sundays are typically slow day. But I've seen those other Sundays that'll, you know, really surprise you. So, but yeah, I, I understand that there's a lot of people that don't want 24-hour coverage. But, or as far as cars physically out. But I would suspect everyone wants assurances that they will be provided 24-hour protection. Maybe not having a car out, but they still expect an officer to respond, whether we have an officer physically out or not.
I would support some sort of pay for being on-call. Some sort of pages for being ready to go.
And that would help out a lot. It is, being there when we're a much smaller department, you know, one of us, just two of, three of us, then one left and there's two of us. It's gotta be a little bit old, getting called out all hours of night, anytime, day or night. And of course, it's a lot easier now with more officers. But, but yeah, that would be helpful if, if we were able to look at, you know, when you talk about Fair Labor Standard Act, it says you have to pay officers being on-call, but it doesn't tell you what they have to get paid. Do they provide some kind of restitution? You know, depending where you're at, some say $2, some say $4 an hour for just being available on-call. Certainly, that would be a lot easier for my officers to take to realize that they're, have some kind of assurances. They'll get some restitution for working on Saturday. But like I said, that's probably for another day. That's probably when we get more closer to budget process. But I guess what I'm saying to you guys is we'll make anything work. Where this came up with too is, you know, if you just stay with four officers, then, you know, my replacement will probably come from internally. You know, for sure, if you keep it down to four officers.
Go ahead, Nick. I have a question for you, Mike. So then we brought Kathy on full-time, which gave us five. So my only question would be, is, I know I personally enjoyed Kathy's workout at the school. And I would assume that if we went from five to four and she was on regular patrol, I would assume that probably, we have four officers compared to five, I would assume Kathy's timeout at the school probably, you correct me if I'm wrong, probably couldn't be near as much.
Well, one thing about Officer Steen, she handles a lot of things behind the scene that involve the school and not during normal school hours. When, when she was very active in the school resource officer scene, she was probably spending closer to 30 hours out there. So there's that potential where we could have Officer Steen devoting 20 or 30 hours of school. And then we could have her cover another shift somewhere.
Surely numbers wise.
But. One thing about Officer Steen, she's also an advocate for sex assault, domestic violence, and also schools. And we use her in all those capacities. And, and sometimes she has to work weird hours and, and different hours and things like that. So I, I, I anticipate to use Officer Steen. Of course, when I leave, I won't have too much to say about it. But in much the same capacity she's doing now.
Just to kind of clarify that, because she kind of left that open. Officers also do investigations. So if you're conducting interviews, you're obviously doing those interviews at the time that is best for that interview week. So if those situations, particularly that Kathy works with, requires those kind of things, she'll, she'll put those kind of hours in there and they'll show up.
Just trying to remember the numbers. In my head, if you went from five to four, she could still do that without having to handle. I think she could do some of it. Yeah, some of it, but I, yeah, that's what I mean, not all. That's kind of my, I'm just trying to ask for numbers in my head if she can still do all of it.
I think, first of all, I kind of think this was a loaded question because you're, you're asking us to go from five to four. Well, we haven't had four full-time officers in a long time because we had four and a half for, for all that time. So what you're really asking us is, are we going to go to four and a half officers or are we going to go to five? Because her, her salary was half-paid by the school district anyway. As long as she's the SRO, still will be, correct? So she's only counting as a half an officer. So.
And like always, Councilman Colton, you've kind of cut it to the point, you know. I think that's probably what we're saying. We're four and a half officers for quite some time. And we're kind of, it's kind of looked like we want to go back in that direction.
Well, that's, I, I'm okay with four and a half officers, which means we would have the four full-time officers and then we would allot, you know, 20, 30 hours for part-time officer.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a scenario in my head of four full-time and a pool of part-timers that we could draw from. Or as needed, a pool of part-timers, I would support paying on-call, on-call also. But there may be times we don't have anybody other than on-call.
That's true.
And I'm fine with that.
But, you know, I just want to emphasize that since I've been here and it, I'm sure it'll continue on, that people will continue to get a response from us, whether we have a, physically have a car out or not. And certainly, it would be tolerable if we went, you know, back where we were before to four and a half officers. I think the city is going to be growing here in the future. And I think you're probably eventually going to end up going back to five. One thing that, you know, a lot of people forget is, you know, when you look at these numbers of 1.5 officers or 2.5 officers. The thing about our town is very unique. It's the thing, one of the things I love about our town, we're very, very close to Iowa City, a major metropolitan area. And, and certainly we have an interstate I-80 goes right through the middle of our town. It's not in our jurisdiction, but basically it goes through the middle of our town. So we actually got a pretty good obligation. And, and thank goodness, West Branch is by nature a pretty peaceful town. It's a town that I really care about and um and we, unfortunately, for whatever reason, we don't have the major crimes that some of the other communities do. Um so I, if the council would have that position of uh four and a half uh with the option of considering paying our officers um for being on call, um that is great. Um and you'd still be saving money. I always thought when I left, you'd have to replace me with two people, but I guess that may not happen. Just kidding, of course.
Okay, uh good chat. Jody, yeah.
I have a couple of other questions. Did we, what is our policy about our officers working also where part-time? At one time, they weren't allowed. I don't know what it is anymore.
If you can make that's. I don't think you can tell them that. This is a right-to-work state. I was a right-to-work state. You can't tell anybody they can't work somewhere.
Uh one time, at one time, they were not allowed to work. They had to have special permission to work part-time for another department. Anyhow.
Riot, riot control or? Iowa Hawkeye games? I don't.
I don't, so obviously that's gone.
Uh we, um in, in answer your question, I'd have to look at the policy. We've had some policy changes here over the last year. Uh but we did have a policy about uh you had to have permission uh to uh work another job with our department. And uh uh the restriction was basically uh cannot interfere with your present job and it cannot have a conflict of interest. So as a general rule, um we don't care for our officers to work for another department. Uh however, a lot of departments do allow their officers to um uh work part-time for other officers or other departments rather. So we do have a policy on that. Um but on the other hand, I, I agree with the other council person who made the comment. You know, when a person's off, you know, uh we're a free society, we shouldn't be able to dictate too much on uh what that person does. In their off-duty time is not, as long as it's still legal.
Okay, my other question is when they take on-call, do we not have one of our officers living in Iowa City?
Oh.
Does, does that person take on-call?
Yes. Um and that's the reason for mileage limitation. You look at Tipton and West Liberty, they have no mileage limitation. Where officers can live, the officers can live wherever they want. Um our department has a restriction of you can't live further than eight miles out because they're expected to respond to our city. We don't have enough coverage, uh so we rely on officers to be on-call. So that's the reason for the eight miles. Um uh so they can um uh you know, they can't live any further out because they would really, really prohibit them to effectively uh respond to emergency situation. So that's part of the reason the eight miles came up is one, to give us guys some option. You know, you couldn't go to a pharmacy or anything. We should have to stay in town. We don't have a pharmacy in town. So uh they were kind of, they had to stay in town. At least now they have the option of going eight miles out when they're on-call. To go to a restaurant or go to a drugstore. But uh typically when officers on-call, they're required to stay within eight miles. Of the town.
Yeah, I understand all that. My issue is when somebody is getting when somebody needs an officer. If domestic violence is happening, you do not have eight, five, I don't care. You can't put a time on it. You need somebody now. I I I guess I'm from the fire department where our response times are supposed to be within three to four minutes and more volunteers. And we're there. But we also have a department of thirty people, so there's people around that always respond.
Well, the, the only way I can respond to that is um, you know, the council uh passed a, in a resolution that officers could live within eight miles of the town. And that says it crow flies.
I know they do.
And so I guess that's, we have to live by that as until the council changes that. The other thought is that if people were truly require uh worried about response time, immediate response time, uh they would insist on twenty-four hour coverage to have an officer on duty uh twenty-four hours a day. And so, because now when my officers are home and they get a call, it's gonna take them three or four minutes to get their gear on and uniform on and, and get their squad car going and getting their computer pulled up uh and their body cameras and stuff like that. So um basically, nothing against West Branch. I really love the town, but you know, when you're on-call and you're uh assigned to the town and you can't leave town uh is very, very limiting. You can't go to the drugstore. And so that's part of the reason why we had the miles limitation to give the officers somewhat of a a little option to go a little further out of town or go to a um, a restaurant that's within eight miles of town when they're on-call. So my, so, but yeah, I understand in, in, you know, uh you've been a very, very big, strong supporter of law enforcement and I really truly believe that. And so was the whole council, actually. But I also understand you guys have some financial uh responsibilities to community and that's why I, I'm basically uh putting it back on the council. Uh I work for the council. I work for the pleasure of the city. And uh I will do whatever the city asks of me. Um so I, I just um, we do have that miles limitation and I guess we have to uh abide by it unless things change.
Right. And that's where I'm saying to the council that if we're gonna have this on-call, then you're gonna have to tell your citizens that if there's a robbery going on up here and somebody or whatever, then they could, and it's the middle of winter. Well.
We already have on-call.
Huh?
We already have on-call.
I know. And we're telling them that depending on which officer's on-call and where they're at.
What would change?
There is a strong.
Do away with on-call.
How are you gonna do that?
That's six officers.
No, I'm not saying.
More than that.
I'm not saying.
That's.
Cause.
We could have another thousand people, maybe we could.
We were told when we were three that four'd get us close.
Yep.
And then we got four and then they said, well, no, it's gonna take five.
Yep.
Now we got five, they was like, no, it's gonna take six, you know.
We need another thousand citizens.
We were told that it would take five.
Okay, are we good? Were we looking for a consensus tonight, Redmond, or what are we looking for?
Well, um, yeah, I guess we're looking for a consensus, cause we, we, we gotta figure out our recruitment strategy, um which basically.
Yeah, which we need to meet.
Yeah. Well.
I have another question for Mike. Mike, um with, with the way society is right now with all the riots, all the, all the police officers that are with everything that's going on with all the, the police forces. In your opinion, how, how easy would it be for you to get some re, uh some part-time help? If we were to go that way, stay with our four and, and say maybe get, like Roger said, a pool of part-time help?
I'm trying to figure out what good way to answer that. I think if we had a full-time position open, we would have all kinds of officers putting in for our full-time position here because we are a safer community. Um, um, I think if we were gonna do that part-time, um try to fill the gaps with part-time people, I would probably try to get a, a few more, like three or four officers and uh have them um more in the standby mode and ha, make sure I have officers that are willing to commit to working some weekends and holidays and stuff. Um, so uh but you're right though, officers, that when they get a weekend off, um they uh usually like to get their weekend off and it's hard to recruit them into our uh town. Um now I would be inclined to let them work a day shift on a Saturday and Sunday. And that might entice some officers to come here and work part-time for us, since it isn't a night shift or an overnight shift or something like that. So with.
Will we require them to live in town or they can live outside of town or just part-time?
Oh, part-time. Our policy is part-time. Since they're not typically on-call, our, our part-time people don't get reimbursed for being on-call. Uh typically, our on, our officers that are part-time are allowed to live anywhere. They have a set schedule they have to work or we give them and they're expected to be here during that time. They're not expected to be um standing by um, um waiting for call. Uh they are actually physically out. So as a result of that, we don't require them to live in the county even.
Okay, um. I'll, I'll come right out. I'm, I'm in favor of four full-time and a little pool of part-timers. That's my scenario. Anybody else disagree, agree?
I'm, I, I think I'm the same.
I'm, I'm a four guy, I guess.
Yeah. I think I am too.
Okay, I'm seeing three of us. I, I don't know, but. Nick or Colton?
I think it's the first step toward the fifth officer.
Yeah, one of those part-time could easily, I'd say a couple of years from now or three years when we actually gain a, we got developments that we're looking at a hundred lots that are in the next five years would be at least fifty percent occupied. So that's fifty more families. That's you know, it's a couple hundred more people.
People.
Minimum. So.
On average, we're talking three, three people per household, so hundred, three hundred people. So on average.
Like Tom says, that's getting us, getting us to the point where in a few years, we've got a part-time, maybe some part-time help that now would wanna be a full-time employee.
That's how it worked out with.
Yeah.
That's how it worked out with.
Yeah.
Kathy.
Okay, I think that's our consensus. I'm issue for. Um, okay, I'm, that's our consensus. While we're on this subject, um. We're gonna.
Four or four and a half?
Four, full-time.
And the half comes in with the part-time group.
Yeah, the half would come in with the part-timers.
There'll be, but there'll be budget for twenty, thirty hours.
Yeah, we can budget. That's right.
I'm against it.
Chief Hiring Committee, um at some point, we need to start interviewing. Whether it's within or without, does someone wanna sit in, want, want me, with me? I'm thinking Tom, since you have the time during the day, maybe?
You've already.
Um.
You're, you, you've already. It's gotta be within now. And you've already made the promise, so you can't go back on your promise.
We haven't promised anyone. We're gonna go through a process though. We still have to go through a little process. And we're gonna have a, a citizen, one citizen with us. And so it'd be myself, Redmond.
Not saying that you did it.
Citizen and Tom. And if we got one more council person, I'm thinking Nick or Jerry, cause you're available, but you can be available during an interview. I'd love to have it. So I may call you, okay, Nick? Since you're kind of at home now, right?
I can just leave. That's like I said.
Come on.
We just have, go have the interview at your house.
There you go. There we go. We'll bring all the, bring the whole disease in and everything. Okay. So we're gonna convene that I, I, this month.
Well, that's like next week.
Well, I'd like to have, just a get-together meeting with us.
Get together, brings this in.
Right. All right, next on the agenda. Item four, Jesus, let's take one. Uh Resolution nineteen thirty-seven. Reaffirming the amendment, restatement and continuance of the existing Brownfields Coalition Memorandum of Agreement for ECIA. Um this is the memorandum Dave withdrew up for us and we are looks like I signed something a couple of years ago.
We're just reaffirming that.
Reaffirming our Brownfield Coalition Pact.
And that was uh, that was uh the same program that helped us get our phase one, phase two.
Yeah, which we benefited greatly from.
Yeah. So definitely favorable.
Okay, I need a motion to approve this uh reaffirmation. Nick?
Second.
Jerry will second. Um any other discussion?
Hold on, hold on, I'm seeing the word MOU and that usually means we're paying money.
No money.
Okay.
Really?
This commitment of time.
All right.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodwayler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stoman?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay. City Administrator.
Uh, okay. Just on the um wastewater pass group um stuff. So I did have a conversation with Ball Ridge and the University of Iowa. I know we were talking about that. And um the pilot project, if they wanna get underway, the big question has been, will the N R give us the time uh to be able to do that? If they're not gonna do it, give us the time, then they can do what they can do in the middle, in the midst of we need forward with the Sagar process. So um after talking with them, they think it's a realistic, well, they think it's a, uh we should take the opportunity to directly ask the N R, but with the caveat that we still need to move forward with the uh third lagoon, which is something that we all realize that we have to do anyway in any, any process that we consider. Outside of the aero mod, which is something we didn't wind up wanting to do, that was more expensive and um, um more mechanical, required more operator experience and all of that. But anyway, so that being said, um I'm going to prepare a letter to um send to the N R, asking them if they would consider doing um allow us to have an extension of our um, our, our, our schedule, so that we can explore these promising technologies that, that they will. So um outside of that, I don't know, call it elastic effort, but outside of that, we're still waiting for our I U P, which is going to be the financing for our, our design expenses. And we're still, our, our, our design costs for, for the project. And we're still expecting to um start design in November, late October, November. So it's not going to cost us any time, uh but maybe it might save us some time, so.
I got a question about that since we're, can we, can we ask questions at this point?
Yes, sir.
All right. So is this design, are we designing this third pod or whatever we call it?
Cell.
Cell? With the idea of putting the ball ridge system in it and, and operating without the aero mod and letting that operate for a next period of time and see how it works? Or, you know, what are we doing here? Are we, you know?
I probably shouldn't even mention the aero mod, but, but we didn't decide to do the aero mod. We decided to do the Sagar, which is. We decided to do the Sagar, which is different than the Arrow Mog. But the Arrow Mog, the one thing of that it would have offered is us not to have to build another lagoon.
Right.
All right. So that's our, we're going to have to build another lagoon anyway and a lagoon is kind of universal. So it doesn't necessarily have to lend itself to any of those Sagar systems, Baldridge system or anything. It's just a third lagoon that we need because of our capacity, we're, we're below capacity.
Okay. So is the idea of this is to build the third lagoon, continue our studies and our alternative methods before we pull the trigger on the Sagar system?
So, um, but we got Baldridge on, on for the remainder of the year. There's going to be time before we start construction, even if design shoots through and there's not a whole lot to be designed with the Sagar. So it's, it, it will move quickly. But, um, we still won't be able to start construction before the Baldridge contract is concluded. So what we're really asking is DNR, yeah, Baldridge, and Baldridge is doing a kind of a piecemeal pilot because he's moving pieces, it's all transferable. A true pilot, a true, a true pilot would actually set the system up and not be kind of a makeshift system like we have now and actually run that during a whole year. That would be a true pilot. So we're asking for like the time for a true pilot.
Perfect.
Yep.
With three cells. So we, so we got to put the third cell in, then do the pilot for a year. So we're really trying to kick this can down the road a couple, two, three years.
Responsibly. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I applaud you. Yeah. But. Good.
Yeah. Okay, um, cleanup happened. Uh, if you hadn't had a chance to take a look at it, uh, it, it was night and day. So, uh, I think it went pretty good. So we, we did do the kind of a gentler approach, uh, gentler approach. And instead of housing this stuff, we actually reached agreement to immediately stack stuff between house and garage. It actually worked out really well. And, um, he actually agreed to sign off his, his dump vehicle. So we didn't have to worry about storage and all that. And he didn't have to do that. So in a way, I think we kind of, kind of reached some meaningful agreement. Um, I believe that maybe he, he will be satisfied with that and not want to see that type of rate of use in the district court. But you never know and people can always do that. So, uh, we'll just wait and see. But, uh, until, until now, I can say it kind of went, went along pretty good.
You got the bill yet on that?
Yeah, we did. It was, um, twenty-nine hundred, uh, without the tow cost. The hitch cost was a couple hundred. So I think it's, um,
Three thousand.
Three thousand. So.
You know, you guys are watching that show, Horders. And you ever watch that show, Horders?
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of, his situation is just like that. You guys go in there and clean it up and you do a eh job. I mean, it's, it's better than it was, but yeah, we didn't call it good, you know? And, and then here we are, eighteen months.
That's your rough prediction?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. We'll be back.
I learned enough. I didn't even doubt that one because I thought it was going to move to Columbus Junction and now it didn't turn out to be the case. Anyway, okay, so, um, rebuild connection, uh, connection. Uh, we're planning on having that on the next, uh, agenda, but I wanted you to see the two different options. We don't have dollar amounts for those options yet, but being Facebook and that up. And, um, and so you'll see that.
Does this go into Roger's yard?
It does. Roger's.
Looks like I get a little bit of concrete there, though.
Well, you don't get the sidewalk.
We, we get, we get.
You don't root for a sidewalk on my yard.
Roger needs to shovel some snow.
Yeah.
Tell David you have a sidewalk on both sides.
How do we get a dead end to a, a circle? The top scenario there. That doesn't work out.
You get your traffic circle you always wanted.
A roundabout.
Yeah, you get a roundabout, you always want it.
It's the first stage.
It's a three-quarter roundabout.
Uh, and just, I guess we had, uh, uh, well, I did start to evaluate your process for, uh, our management team and, um, looking to wrap that up this week and, well, next week. But, um, we, uh, I introduced, uh, a book, Food Move My Cheese, which is a good book. I don't know if anyone's familiar with it. But it actually is, it'll really be a read and, um, may help every, everybody, even in, in your personal relationships. Very good. But, um, so we'll be talking about that and I'll be wrapping up evaluations, um, this week, most likely, maybe next week. So, so we'll bring that in the office. Okay, um, gas skills, I think, uh, I think we've done everything that we were supposed to do up to this point. Um, we expect that that's going to be on October nineteenth.
Second meeting, yes.
Okay, second meeting October. So, um, so that's where we belong and, um, that's that.
Okay.
Hey, on the, on the Greenview thing. By chance, have we, um, talked to the besides Roger?
Yeah, uh, the gentleman across the road.
The, yeah, the two other, well, there might actually be a third.
I've talked to one of them. He's, he's warmed up to it.
No, okay. But about which?
He wants sidewalk.
Yeah, he asked for a sidewalk. Is that what you're asking him on?
No, no, no. I'm asking to keep the loop.
Oh.
Or to do away with it and.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, if you get, if you get, if you go, if you go with a sidewalk, it.
No, they both have a sidewalk.
Really haven't heard feedback one way or the other. I just know which was.
I give us some feedback. With Cedar Johnson Road coming down the road, down the line, it's possibly being resurfaced. That's going to shut off everything from Greenview and Bigford and they're all going to go through there to get out of town. So.
A straight road makes more.
Straight road is the only way to go. You're not, it'll be in Roger's driveway.
Good point.
Especially since I usually go the wrong way down that, my circle. I go the wrong way to get in.
Yeah, good point. So we'll see how much that costs. Making decisions.
Yeah, we need money. We need money estimates.
Well.
And how are we going to pay for it?
And how are we going to pay for it?
The developer is going to get half of that grading done for us.
Yeah, he's.
To get there.
Well, that's another thing to talk about.
Yeah.
Not half of it. They're not going to do any grading.
Yeah, he is. He's got to cut the water down. He's going to already have.
Doing it now, but.
He's already going to have half the dirt gone.
Then he was.
Put it back.
Dave said, I was sent a developer agreement. Dave said they're doing grading up there.
Not, not on our city property, they're not. They're putting in a water line, but.
What they're doing.
They're putting the dirt back.
They're probably going to stop before you get to the city portion, but.
Well, they got to go into the city portion to get to water main.
Yeah, they're way in there now. They're doing the water main.
That's what I'm saying. They got to lower that water main. They're already taking the dirt off of that to get to get up through there.
Well, I was going to tell them, don't put it back, Roger.
Give the dirt. I'm not, I don't tell them what to do. I get in trouble for that.
They lay ashes on that dirt.
Kevin, you have anything? All right, Melissa, Matt, anything?
Nope.
Matt?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, Mayor and Council. Only thing I have is there'll be a couple of final plats coming to us in the end of October, probably of Lotham Ridge and Meadows Park, the Meadows. There may not be a street at Lotham Ridge when we get the final plat, so we'll have to discuss a escrow. Yeah. Hopefully it's not too complicated. When we, when we get it.
What's going to be missing?
Street.
Street. They'll be done by the end of October. But we need to have to approve the final plat. Okay, in motion to adjourn, anybody? Nick and Jerry.
Hi.